Okay, the time being seven o'clock. I'll call on Monday, September 28th, 2020, meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. I'll first read the proclamation from the state regarding Zoom meetings and remote meetings pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Oxford, of the open meeting bylaw. General law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order connecting concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, meetings in the town of Oxford, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. Okay, first on the agenda, plans not requiring subdivision approval, we have none. A little downtime here, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 14th, 2020.
I'll make that a motion.
Seconded by Dale.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any issues by anybody? There being none, call for a roll call vote, I'll vote yes. Jeff?
I'll vote yes.
Norman?
Amen.
Abstained. Craig?
Yes.
Yes. Roger?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Okay, carried. Hey, I gotta get my phone out so I can read the next public hearing notice. Okay, the time being 7:05, we have a public hearing, Hope Ave, map 46, parcel B03, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan. Applicant owner, Lawrence C. Crowley, closed lots. I'll first read the public hearing notice pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T and Section 81U. In the Oxford Subdivision Control Rules and Regulations, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom meeting application on Monday, September 28th, 2020 at 7:05 PM, and a definitive four-lot subdivision, residential subdivision plan.
Can we ask folks to mute, there's a lot of background noise?
That they can't see.
I think most people are muted.
Submitted by the planning board on August 25th, 2020 was prepared by James Patrick Smith, professional engineer, registered professional land surveyor from Topper Land Survey Incorporated of North Oxford, and is dated August 10th, 2020. The applicant owner is Lawrence Crowley of Mass., of Oxford, Mass. The plans and applications may be reviewed in the town clerk's office or the planning department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should join the Zoom meeting on the date and time designated or submit written comments before this date of the hearing of the planning Okay, and I guess we received a couple of departmental memos, I'll read those into the record. To the planning board from the Board of Health, dated September 23rd, 2020, Hope Ave proposed subdivision. Dear Planning Board members, the Board of Health has reviewed the application for approval of the definitive subdivision plan for Hope Avenue. Prepared for Lawrence S. Crowley of Oxford, Mass., the planning, the, the Board of Health has no issues with the request at this time, however, they reserve the right to review and comment at a later time. That's from Thomas Purcell. And then to the planning board from Judy Lochner, or the conservation agent. Upon review of the definitive subdivision plans for four lots off of Hope Ave, it is noted that all four lots have some land in the riverfront area floodplain and, and may also have bordering vegetated wetlands. Development of land may require application and approval from the Conservation Commission for any work is proposed in the resource areas or associated buffer zones. As we got this plan and we approved it to go through the system on August 24th, 2020, major discussion took place regarding assurance of access to all four lots and how that would be legally done and maintained. And I guess at this time, I'll, I'll ask Dan Proudy to explain their rationale behind going to separate sidewalks and separate driveways.
Basically, the, the lots, except for the parallel frontage to, to Hope Ave conforms to rules and regulations. There's a 41-foot right-of-way that we, that subject to your approval, the National Grid will approve. So it's 41 feet for lots, one and two, 41 feet wide for three and four. So we designed it so each person could have their own 12-foot-wide driveway, and as it extends into the lot, we left an area for a hammerhead for a, because it's over 110 feet from the road, or 120 feet from the road, that for the setbacks and so forth. We allowed that for emergency vehicles to have a, have a turnaround. And so, so basically, it's been through the zoning board of appeals, unanimously approved, and their feeling was, of course, because it met all the other criteria. And so, I, I, I think that's in line with everything we've always discussed over the last couple of years, as this went through the, you know, went through the process.
Okay, well, I guess when the plan was submitted, we had your engineer on the line here, and two thoughts were raised, okay? My thought was, make that easement along with some of the land of the lots, and make a common driveway with a cul-de-sac at the end of it, and then the two driveways separated from there. Okay? That way there, I had, I had assurance from, from a planning board access point of view that both owners had equal opportunity to maintain this, own this, they're basically, I guess, I guess the easement is going to be owned by somebody, okay? Now, Dan, you're, the approach of the two driveways means you gotta go back and subdivide that easement into two separate easements.
Well, no, they, they, they both have the right over the, it's a right-of-way, they both have a right-of-way to use over, but let's say we sold lot one today, and then lot sold doesn't get, so, lot two doesn't get sold for 10 years or something, or five years.
But, but what if he builds that, what if he builds his driveway on lot two's 21 feet, or whatever it is, you know?
Well, that will be, you know, we can, we can put that in the deed for the, of the deed of right-of-way, but, you know, I mean, I mean, we, we deal, when, when you build a home today, you're investing a lot of money, and, you know, it's, it's, I mean, we're gonna have to go through a building permit process as well. So, you know, and, and we're dealing with adults here, I mean, so it's, so hey, we're gonna present a plan and say, look, this is when you sell the lot, this is what you're, you know, this is how you're gonna access through your driveway.
I have a comment I'd like to make. We, I know Captain Sellers is here, because we, as far as I'm concerned, I've done everything we asked him to do. We started this process a year ago, and they came in and we said, well, you don't have access to your lot. So they went with the power company, and they got a 42-foot access for each, for each lot. Then we said, you gotta go before the zoning board of appeals, because you don't have the frontage. They went through the zoning board of appeals, they were approved, they were granted their variance, there was no opposition. Then we came back and said, well, we want to make sure you have adequate access, which by the way, are all legitimate requests. I know Captain Sellers is here tonight, did you have a chance, Dan? Because we brought this up at the last meeting, we suggested that you talk to Captain Sellers and work something out with him. Have you guys done that yet?
Yes.
Yes, he has.
Yes.
All right, so, Richard, it's okay with you, I'd like to hear what Captain Sellers has to say as far as access, which is what I think is the final concern that we need to deal with.
Go ahead, Ken.
Rich, I'd like to hear.
Thank you, gentlemen. I met with Dan twice over the last week or so. He was gracious enough to put the hammerheads in so that we had a turnaround. He did supply me with a set of drawings today that I did get to review. Dan, the question that I have for you is, what are you going to separate the two driveways with? Is it natural vegetation?
I, I would assume it would be natural vegetation, you know, some, you know, just some trees in between, you know, I mean, it, it's, it's probably, you know, up to the, up to the homeowner. I mean, I, I think the, the code or the bylaw was for 10-foot, we made them 12 feet each. I think, I think the road, Hope Ave is, might be 14 feet wide, it's not too wide.
Well, that's, and, and you're right, Hope Ave is a very narrow street, and that's part of the, part of the issue and why Massachusetts adopted the NFPA-1 access code, because a lot of the older streets that were built, they don't have adequate access for fire apparatus. So my, I, I guess, after viewing this, one of my concerns is, for instance, if you, if you go down off of Old Webster Road and you go to Sneed Drive, Sneed Drive is, is got that cul-de-sac, and it's got that island all, that goes all the way down it. That limits our fire department access, and by fire department access, I mean our apparatus access. It's very constricting. We had, a couple of months ago, we, we had smoke in one of the houses down there, and, you know, two of the trucks just barely made it down that, that road, it, it was very narrow. You did make them 12 feet wide, and, and you do have a turnaround, but I would, I, I guess, I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a little better of a drawing. I, I'm, I'm a little concerned with, with the island in the middle of the two driveways.
Well, upon your recommendation, we could probably just backfill that to grade, you know, it's all gravel down there, and, I mean, you know, actually, if, if, if these lots, if these lots were not separated, and someone was gonna build a driveway for a single-family house without a right-of-way, it would probably be in line with what we proposed. But if you have a recommendation, you would like to see them, you know, not necessarily joined together, but, but connected with gravel, with no trees, and maintained, you know, I'm sure we can, we can put that on a plan that will go with the, you know, which would be, would, would go with the building permit application.
Mr. M., and I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we could do that. Would, would that be affecting, would that affect the groundwater runoff and all of the other issues that the driveway might cause?
We'd deal with that when we come for stormwater management for each individual lot. So that would be further down, when they come and apply to us for a building permit for a lot, they have to show the lot, they have to do the stormwater management, they have to show the location of the driveway, all that stuff will be done on that individual plan. I think our concern, and Richard, if I'm wrong, correct me, we wanted to make sure, Ken, that you guys had access to adequately, you know, get trucks down there. And I think what Rich talked about, and Rich, again, if I'm misspeaking, let me know, is if we could have, and this is just throwing this out, would it be better if we had a common driveway in the middle? You go down the driveway, at the end you have a T, which would act as a hammerhead. The left you go to one house, to the right you would go to the other house, you would have your hammerhead area, Ken, where you could turn the trucks around, and there would be no division between two driveways. And then we do, to make the driveway 14 feet wide. Again, I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion, so we can make sure that you have good access to each, each individual lot.
And, and I, Norm, I think that might be the answer, I mean, the grade of the driveway is perfect, it's only 5%, it, it's not, there's not a big slope there, but, I mean, what are we looking at, what are, what are we looking at for houses? Are we looking at raised ranches? Are we looking at a big colonial? I mean, what, nobody knows what's gonna get built there.
Right, right.
That's correct. So, I, I need to, I need to be able to plan for the worst-case scenario.
So what would that be? What would that be?
Well, worst-case scenario would be, you know...
Three-decker colonial.
Yeah, a big colonial with, you know, two, two stories on one side and three on the other, and, and we need both our ladder trucks up there. You know, the two biggest pieces of apparatus that we have is that tower and, and, and our ladder too, so...
What if we put in a 15-foot wide, and I'm throwing this out, and I'm not saying that Mr. Crowley's gonna do this, but I, I guess we have to get to a point where, what's gonna work for you? Because we've gone through all this other stuff, we need to know what's gonna work for you, and then we'll request that they put that in the plan. If we put a 3-foot wide driveway with a T at the end...
I, I honestly believe a shared driveway, a shared driveway with nothing in the middle.
Okay. That's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. How wide would you want the driveway?
Minimum of 20 feet.
Well, I would, I would say a common driveway, criteria is 18 feet. It's 18.
Okay, and I think that's what we've done in the past, I think we've done 18 feet, and contractors have put, contractors have put hard-packed rock on each side.
And then you have, you want a T at the end, which can go to one house or the other house, and it could also act as a turnaround, turnpoint for you, right? We've done this in the past, and we just...
Yeah, well, the, the, the hammerhead would be in the middle.
Okay.
So, because, yeah, you're gonna go up to the T to go to one house and then go to the other, but we would also have a turnaround in, in the middle of the driveway, like we've done in the past, so the trucks can back in and drive out.
Dan, you think you can work that out?
Rich, for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, Dan, as it is now, both these properties are sharing that 42-foot easement, is that correct?
That's right.
And you, and your proposal was to put something on the deed saying that there'd be equal, equal share of that easement to get to their properties, is that what you're proposing?
Well, I don't know if, I, I forget if they had to go back through stormwater management review, that would be at the whim of the planning board at the time, but I mean, it's...
But like, like you said, though, if one property gets built and, and they use up more than their fair share of that easement, then the other property is stuck.
I know, and I, I don't have a problem anything that's reasonable, except for the fact that, and I, and I'm willing to work any way I can, but if we look at that, if, if, if I was here on a regular A&R plan with no right-of-way, right? What would I, to get a building permit, what would I have to have for a driveway? Because I understand that a 10-foot-wide driveway, so, so anyway, I mean, in an ideal world, is a builder buys a lot, so he puts up two houses, you know, at the same time, and he puts the 18-foot driveway in. Now, if that's a specification that keeps everybody happy, you know, I'm, I'm sure we can live with that, it's just that, you know, we just want to do something that makes common sense, and, you know, and like I said, we'll live with it. So, so if it's 18 feet, and we gotta put like, two feet of stone on each side, you know, compacted stone, you know, that's probably not unreasonable, and, but if we, but if now if we have to build a roadway in there, you know, the other thing I look at all the time is, you know, you know, years ago when I built my house, it was pretty easy, and I figure, okay, you know, back in the 70s, my contemporaries, we were building houses, and they were $35,000. Today, you can't build a house for less than $450,000. So, what are we doing for the next generation, you know, if we're gonna say, okay, we want a perfect world, I just want to, let's, let's do something reasonable, so we're not, you know, we're not in Southborough where you can build, you can, where a house is $800,000 and you can bury this expense in, we're still a blue-collar town, so, but, you know, whatever you think is reasonable, hey, we'll work it out, and then, of course, before we get a building permit, it's gonna go through the building inspection, if we, if we cross the threshold for stormwater management, we have to come back and see you. So, it'll, it'll be what, it is what it is, but I'm just trying to be reasonable, okay?
Mr. Chairman, this is Andy Baum from Summit Engineering. If I'm correct, if you're gonna require a common driveway as part of this approval, that's a special permit process, is that correct?
Correct. But at this point, at this point in time, they could just put a comment on their plan saying, access to lots one and two will be through that easement, and a common driveway will be the, the means of access for both lots, okay? Same thing with three and four. All we need is a note on the drawing, we don't need you to do it if you're not, if you haven't sold anything, but before you can, you know, sell anything, you're gonna need a common driveway, yeah, a special permit.
So you're gonna burden the property with another 90-day process?
All right, that's our rules and regulations. Okay. Rich? We have to, we have to assure access to both those lots, you're asking for a definitive subdivision plan, just showing one easement, and two lots back there, doesn't do it for me, I'm sorry, just doesn't do it for me. Either that or show your driveways, split your easement in half, okay, so that it, it definitely shows that each lot has its own driveway access.
Check this out with Mary, okay, getting back to this other thing, okay?
Go ahead, Craig.
Mary, if I'm wrong, correct me, you need a 10-foot-wide driveway, and you need to be five feet from the property line. If this was just a regular A&R lot, like we talked about...
Regular A&R lot, Norman, we wouldn't even need to know where the driveway is.
No, that's right, but you gotta let me finish here, okay? Because that's what we're looking at, we're looking at two individual lots, this is a unique situation. They could put a 10-foot driveway in, right, take the 42-foot easement, divide it into 21 feet, you have a 10-foot-wide driveway, you have five feet on either side, plus you got another foot to deal with. They could come in and do that with each lot.
I know, your, your fire department didn't like that, though.
Huh?
Well, the fire department didn't like the width of that, though.
But that's, but that's the issue, though, because then they don't, and, and Ken, this is, all due respect to you, every other driveway we got on an A&R lot, that's what it is, it's 10 feet wide, okay, and they meet the five-foot setback requirement. So if that's the reasoning, if they can't do it, then we gotta look at our bylaw.
Yeah, you're right.
But, no, and they didn't split...
I don't know what defines a driveway.
They didn't split the easement, though, they're sharing that 42-foot easement.
Well, they, if they wanna show this on the plan, they could split the easement.
Yes, yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, they could show two separate lots, one lot would have 21-foot easement, the other lot would have a 21-foot easement. They can put in the driveway, based on our current standards, and everybody can be happy. That's what I'm saying, we're not, listen, this is, I've been on the board 13 years, Rich, you've been longer than me, we've never had this situation before.
No, this is unique.
A little bit, okay? And if they're meeting the requirements for a standard driveway, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to get this to work out, so Ken is happy and safe, and the owner can get on with this project that he's been dealing with for over a year.
Can you split your easement, Dan?
I don't see why not, I mean, the, you know, the easement goes with both people, but I mean, if we have to put a, you know, something in the deed...
Instead of two easements, Dan, could you have four?
What's that?
Could you make that four easements, 21 feet wide?
Well, exactly.
Well, I don't wanna promise something without first knowing if I can. That, that right, we have a right-of-way, a 41-foot right-of-way from National Grid, okay? Once this is approved, they won't, you know, they said, finish with the planning board and then come back and we'll sell you the easement, okay? So, all right, so, I would say that once I buy, I have the right-of-way for access, and I can do, on that right-of-way, as long as it's a right-of-way going in there, I don't see why I couldn't do it, but I, I'm assuming legally that would not be a problem. I mean, a right-of-way is a right-of-way whether 50 people are using it or two people are using it.
I don't know, I had, I had at one point a building inspector tell me, if there's only one easement, you're using it, no one else can use it.
Right, but I think what you're saying, Rich, meant, so we'll get two easements, or four easements.
Yep. I agree.
Well, we're not gonna get any more easements from the right-of-ways, we're not getting any more right-of-ways from the power company, okay? They don't have any restriction, they just chose a right-of-way to, to those lots, all right? I don't think, I don't think they care whether we have two roads or not, but...
You're just protecting each...
My only thing is, is, is I'd have to see legally if I can get, if I need permission from them. I don't see why, a right-of-way is a right-of-way.
You're protecting both those lots by doing that, though.
Yeah, you're giving both lots some frontage to Hope Ave.
Yes.
You're giving them their access, now you don't have to have another special permit.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's, I would handle it, but...
All right. I see Craig's trying to talk, he's an engineer, let's get his opinion.
No, I, my only question was, would, will National Grid allow you to create two separate easements? I don't see why they wouldn't, I don't think they really care.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, in terms like design work, was that a, they're gonna allow you to grade outside the easement, because it looks like that sketch shows the driveways outside of the 40-foot, 42-foot easement, and the grading is outside the easement. I know it's probably just a little sketch you threw together, but is that okay? Is that okay with the...
Well, hey, I, I don't see why it wasn't, because they've done some work down there on Mr. Crowley's, like, other land, where, you know, they never asked permission, they did it, I mean, we didn't ask them for a grade, a, a, a grade easement, but then, hey, when it's done, it's done. I mean, they're, the, the right-of-way is gonna be within the right-of-way, so, if we're gonna have access and egress out to Hope Ave.
Yeah, my, my personal opinion is that you divide the two easements into four easements, everybody has their own access, then you don't have to deal with one person, on the other person's easement, at least there's something they can go, here's the easement, get on your own side.
Well, hey, that's what we tried to do with this.
Right.
So, you know, and, and the problem is, is, now, in your bylaw, does your bylaw say that the driveway has to be paved?
No.
No.
I think it was the first 10, I think, right?
I mean, a common driveway, yes.
Yeah.
There are, there are things associated with the common driveway, because it affects more than one.
That's right, okay, so...
But for driveways, we don't even bring up driveways.
Well, when, when Captain Sellers and I talked about it, and one thing, you know, you know, we've seen the picture of going up Sutton Ave, we have these 600-foot driveways, and I concurred with him, I said, sure... And I concurred with him. I said, sure, who wants to, you know, when you're, if you're servicing something with tankers, you're going to drive in. No one wants to drive back on five or 600 feet.
Right.
Or even 100 feet. So that was what we're going to do. So, okay. So why don't we just, why don't I rewrite the right of way where they, they abut each other on the right of way? And if the first guy comes in, he builds his 15 or 18 feet, you've got it. And the next guy, his right of way, he's going to join up to it. And that gives you, when there's two houses in, that gives you a, a wider, wider area to, to go through.
Sounds good to me.
Before we go on any further, because we want to, I hope wrap this up at some point. Is there anything else that we need to deal with? So when they come back, we don't hit them with a list of other things, right? We, I don't want to go over what I did before, but if they write this up, and I think most of it that has spoken so far seem to be on the same page. We want to have the access here. When they come back, are we going to be all set to go with this? Are we going to have more issues? I, I don't see any other issue. I think Rich brought this up from day one. His concern was accessibility. We've got the fire department involved. Sounds like we've worked some kind of a solution here. Is this going to be all we're going to require? I have nothing else I'm looking for.
As far as the width of the driveway, Captain Sellers has a, has an issue with 10 feet. Okay, he'll be the first to tell you that.
If that's the case, with all due respect, we got to change every driveway.
We got to look at how driveways are defined in the bylaw and, and put something on it then. Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, they'll come up there in stormwater too.
Norm, don't, Norm, don't forget, you're looking at driveways that were built prior to the fire department access code. So anything that, anything that we, anything that we've built in the last year has been wider than 10 feet.
But let me just say this, you're right, but the bylaw, we haven't changed the bylaw. The bylaw is not coming. The bylaw says 10 foot wide driveway.
I, I mean, I, I think, I think all of you guys can, can agree that I, I'm, I'm usually pretty workable and I, and I, and I try to work with everybody. His drawings have a 12 foot wide driveway. And the drawings that I'm looking at right now have a 12 foot wide driveway with a 5% slope.
Would that work for you, 12 foot wide?
But, and he's gonna, and, and he's already stated earlier, and, and, and Dan, if I'm misspeaking, please speak up. He's, he's willing to give me two more feet on each side of hard packed gravel.
That's right. And that's fine. Work it out.
So, so I'm, so I'm okay with that. I, I'm all right with that.
I was more of the fact I wanted to make sure that legally both lots were protected for an access point of view.
If, if you guys want, if you guys want a shared driveway or if you want to make them his easements, that's, I mean, that's on, that's you, that's totally on you. If he's got a 12 foot wide driveway with a 5% slope and he's willing to give me two feet on each side of hard back gravel, I'm at 16 feet.
That sounds good to me.
I'm okay with that.
Rich, I, I think those, I think the easement split into two will answer your question, right? Because each one will have their own.
If the plan came in here showing that, we might have been done by now.
And 12 foot paved, right, Rich? You want 12 foot, Ken wants 12 foot paved. That's okay, right?
Not even paving it. I don't care if it's all gravel. Doesn't matter. It's, he's got to sell his lot.
Right.
That could be.
12 feet wide, 12 foot gravel? Ken?
Norm, you said what?
I'm asking you if, if, if they made it 12 feet wide each driveway and they put two feet of gravel on each side, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that gives me a 16 foot driveway.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll be in front of everyone again, because like Captain Sellers said, when he does stormwater management, he's got to show all this stuff all over again.
So we're basically making everybody happy at this point?
Yeah.
As happy as they can be. I don't see Dan smiling yet.
This is what I think could make my client happy, so I could be happy. Is if we can sign this and, you know, we will give you a letter before we pick up the bylaw that's signed of, of what we said here, okay? And I'll go back and I'll, I'll meet with Captain Sellers again. So we both, we're both in agreement. He's in agreement with what we write up. And then when we come before you for the permit, we will, we will show how we, we accommodated it according to the 16 foot gravel paved right of way.
For each house.
For each.
Fortunately, Dan, this is going to be a, a, a registered definitive subdivision plan. You've got to show the, the, what you put in a memo, you got to show it on here. Plus, plus I think we got to, we've got to be assured that the easements are broken up.
All right, where's, where's Andy Baum? Can you?
I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, the, the purpose of the definitive subdivision, I also included some information from the A and R handbook that I provided this afternoon. And, and the key question for the planning board is that there's adequate access in that the planning board agrees that there's adequate access to the lots, given the reduction in the frontage. That is why this process requires a definitive subdivision and not a simple A and R plan, even though it has a granted variance. So access is the key.
Showing one big easement now, not, not even telling that it goes to this one or this one. It just, if you were to look at it on paper, you'd say it goes to both. Okay?
So we also provided a sketch showing that you could provide, have adequate room for adjacent driveways to access each individual lot.
Yeah, well, I think it should go on, I think, I think it's got two problems. One, he shows one easement for two lots. Okay. And number two, what he showed on a piece of paper isn't on, on this plan.
Right. But like I said, it's really for the purpose of determining access to the site, to the property. So there's no grading that's restrictive to the site. As Captain Sellers indicated, the 5% grade driveway is not prohibitive to getting access to the site for his fire apparatus, for one. Secondly, each side has 21 feet, so we've determined that through this conversation that we can fit a 12 foot wide driveway with two foot shoulders to access the buildable portion of the lot. So I've satisfied both of those requirements with, for this portion of the definitive subdivision. If you're looking for individual lot grading, we'd have to go and do soil testing.
The easement broken in two.
Well, that can be easily be done. We can say easement A for lot one and so on and so forth. That can be amended.
Or easement one for lot one, whatever way you want to do it.
Would you consider approving this with that condition? That they, that we approve with the condition that they come back, they, they adjust the plan so that each lot has a 16 foot wide driveway for access to each lot. Now they get their approval. We condition that, they go back, they deal with Captain Sellers, get that thing done, and then we're done with it. Until they decide to build a house, which they got to come back and they have to show us the exact specs of that driveway and also the stormwater management and all that stuff. So they can't do anything. If we approve it that way, they can't do anything without coming back before us. So that would be something that I would be willing to consider. Obviously, I would, you know, adhere to whatever you want to say, but I think that would be the, it allows them to do their thing, it protects us, and we do have more protection by the, by the fact that they have to come back and they can't build anything until they give us a site plan that we approve. And then we can talk more about it. And before I forget, I, I don't want to, I'm getting old here. I forget stuff, but, and Ken, while you're here, I think we really got to make it an effort, Rich, to really redo our driveway by law based on what Captain Sellers says.
Well, you know, probably two years ago now, Jared and I started working on that and Sean was supposed to take the range and help us finish it and it hasn't gotten done. So we, we need to, you know, obviously, we're not going to finish it anytime soon now, but I agree with you, Norm. Once, once we get somebody in place or even the new engineer, I haven't even, I haven't even talked to the new engineer about it, but we do need to, we do need to tighten up that bylaw.
Yeah, because we passed, we've, we've already approved lots with 10 foot wide driveways. Although, every, everyone we've approved, right, Mary, in the last, whatever, six months have all had 10 foot wide driveways, so you're going to have issues with all of them. So I'm glad we started the process. The town manager's here. We did hire someone to help us do this stuff. And because there are other things that we need to get done as well. So anyway, that's my suggestion as far as tonight goes, Rich. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but.
Again, as long as those easements are broken up and to, you know, whether it's easement A, easement B, as long as they're broken up so that each homeowner or each landowner is protected, I have no problem.
Put that in as a condition, as a.
Okay, just so I have this straight, okay? We come back in two weeks showing a line for the, on the 42 foot wide, 42 or 41 foot wide right of way from National Grid. We put a line down the middle and we put, okay, lot one has this 21 feet. Lot two has this 21 feet. And that's on the, you know, for the driveway. That, you know, which is incumbent upon the eventual builder to, to come to this specification. You're going to be able to sign the plan.
Yes. I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable leaving conditioning this plan.
With the, with the. Chairman, and I, I respect that, so that's what we'll do.
I'm just saying, Norman, it's one easement for two lots. Okay?
Yeah.
Lot one could build it on lot two's land easement.
To his point, they come back and do that, we're going to be all set with this, right?
Yes, we will. That's, I was at least looking for that.
Okay, so lot one's going to have half the easement, lot two's going to have half the easement. Same thing in three and four. So we just, we're putting a line down the middle.
Yep.
Okay. And then when we, then when it goes for the building permit, when they show the site plan with the septic location, the house location, the, they're going to have the hammerhead and the 16 feet wide driveway going into the lot.
Yeah, you want to leave it gravel, you can leave it gravel.
Okay, but, but as far as the, the lot being signed off, we're going to just give each one their own. I mean, because the design's going to be done, you know, by the homeowner or the builder.
Correct.
To a specification.
At least you tell them what, what easement they've got to get to the road.
Okay.
And work out the driveway worth with Ken, you'll need that worked out when you come for each individual building plan.
Okay, so what we're going to do is.
Plus four, so let's make his life easier too, but that's, you work that out with him.
All right, so we'll, I'll start buying, I'll get the bylaw and we'll, I'll bring it back to, to Topoland Survey and Summit Engineering. They can redraw it, bring it back, and then we can reconvene for five minutes and get this done.
Yep, appreciate it.
Yep.
So do we need any confirmation from National Grid?
No, they're going to National Grid after the fact. If they can't get the, if they can't get the easements like that, they're dead in the water.
Okay.
Right? That's what I'm hearing.
I mean, hey, they give us a right of way. They don't care what we do with the right of way.
All you're doing is putting a line down the middle saying we want to make it two separate ones for the same size.
And are you all set with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Rich, is there anybody from the public that might want to talk about it? Is there anyone here that wanted to talk about this particular definitive subdivision plan?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Okay, I see.
Has any one of you actually driven down Hope Avenue?
We live on Hope Ave.
Oh, you do? So I do too. I mean, I don't know if you guys see how wide the road is and it's a private way. The town doesn't maintain it. Because I kept hearing the town owns it and maintains it. It does not maintain it. Nor is it wide enough for even a fire truck to come down when it snows.
Yeah, well, someday I'd like to see that road get, you know, be a public way. You know, but I don't know, I don't know how it's going to happen. A lot of stuff happened in the past that comes back to haunt us today.
So I'm just concerned how a fire truck would get down after we have a few snowstorms and the road's barely passable by one car going at a time.
When it gets down out, a house is out of there. That'll catch on fire.
I mean, there are a lot of roads.
Ken, you want to address this concern?
Yes. Oh. Even though the town does not own the road, during snowstorms or, or, or weather emergencies, the town does provide the fire department with a plow, plow truck. And it will come down the Hope Ave with us if we need to. So, and we have, we have done it in the past where they, they've come and cleared out a street for us so that we can get down it with an ambulance. I, I'm looking, I'm looking at these measurements and according to, according to Summit Engineering, Hope Ave is 30 feet wide.
Maybe the right, maybe the right of way that it's on is 30 feet wide.
That's, that's, that's correct. It's the right of way. It's not the actual paved surface.
Yeah.
Yeah, the paved surface is barely a paved surface.
Joe, but yes, to answer the gentleman's question, we, I mean, obviously, the fire department at some point in time has been down Hope Ave. We've, we've gotten down there and gotten out safely. And in inclement weather, the, the, the town does, the DPW does assist us in gaining access into streets that have been narrowed by snow rolls and whatnot.
Okay, I mean, that would clear up my concern. I was just, just confused how it would fit through the narrow passage. All right, well, thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just, John Hester. And Chief, you've been down at my house six times. Two emergencies and four bacon fires. So thank you very much. You always get down there, it's not wrong. We're just.
It's captive, but thank you.
The road itself is a nightmare. It's a disaster. The potholes are disgusting. What do we do as residents to get this thing a private way? I mean, a public way, we're happy to do it. What are we going to do? Is it up to Crowley? Who is it up to to get that done?
Call it a good question. That's a good question. I really don't know. I do know we're not the only town, we're not the only town that has private ways that don't meet, you know, town specs.
Yeah, if I was going to buy a $450,000 house and I came down and seen Hope Ave, I think I'd find another place to build a house.
Yeah.
That's what he's up against. That's what he's going to be up against.
You know, but, but is there some, something that we can do to start a process to get this to be a, a public way? What do we do? We don't know.
Call the town home. Start with the town manager's office, ask the question, and they will direct you on which way you don't go.
Okay. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? None. I entertain a motion to.
Continue.
Continue this public hearing too. Mary?
Next planning board meeting date is not until October 26.
Yeah, I'll make that a motion. Second.
Second. Seconded by Dale. Ken, we, our next meeting falls on, what is it, Columbus Day? So we have no other business other than this. I don't know if you can get it done in time and for any, for, if we move the meeting and just had you on it. I don't know what your timeframe is.
All we need is a line down the middle. I'm going to pick up the bylaw. I'm going to bring it back and Summit Engineering is going to put the line on, a Topoland survey. Going to bring it back and bring it back to you for the next meeting.
You guys want to meet next week, next Monday?
It's fine.
On the fifth?
I can, yeah. It's fine.
Have this done in time for the fifth, Andy?
Yeah, he's saying he's going to be here tomorrow. He's going to see you tomorrow. Okay, anyway. Let's, let's do first things first. Entertain a motion to schedule our first meeting in October to October 5th in lieu of the holiday.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by.
Second.
Dale. Okay, roll call vote. I vote aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes, aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Hey, carried unanimously. Okay. Oh, I forgot Roger. Sorry, Roger. Roger.
Yeah, aye.
Who aye? Okay.
It's like Hollywood Squares.
Now we're unanimous. I'm seeing too many squares on the screen. I'm seeing too many squares on the screen. Okay, so we have a motion and it's been seconded to have a meeting on October 5th at seven o'clock. It'll be the only thing on there, right? Let's make it seven o'clock. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll sign it, we'll do it, and we'll be done, okay? We may have a couple old business things, but at least we'll be done.
Okay. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those voting, I vote aye. Jeff?
Aye.
She already voted.
No, we're voting.
This is for the, this is for the, this is for putting this on the, this continuation onto that meeting.
I'm getting tired, Rich.
Okay. Greg?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And? Roger?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. We'll see you then.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. The next item on the agenda, which I've already lost in my paperwork.
Go, kicking time.
We have a public hearing, a proposed zoning bylaw amendment, chapter three, section 3.8. Removal special permit requirement for leg-ang poultry for quantities of six are on end under. First read the public hearing notice. I got a fine nose, I had them too.
That annoys me there, Rich.
Okay. Pursuant to Mass General Arch, chapter 48, section 5, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing using Zoom meeting application on Monday, September 28, 2020 at 7:10 PM to consider an article on the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on October 7, 2020, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 3. Section 3.8 of the Town of Oxford zoning bylaw to remove the requirement of a special permit for animals by the Board of Selectmen for quantities of six and under egg-laying chickens and ducks, with additional policy to be adopted by the Board of Selectmen relative to the licensing and permitting of quantities of six and under egg-laying chickens and ducks. Anyone desiring, desiring to be heard, this man should join the Zoom meeting at the designated time or submit written comments. Okay. Didn't have any written comments, so. This, this particular zoning article is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. And, Tommy and Jennifer's here.
Oh, I'm.
Give us the background on it.
Can I just interrupt for a moment, sorry to interrupt? We received some written comment from Kelly Flynn, Animal Control Officer. I just want to make note of that, we can, we can get that right into the record later.
Yeah, she, she did comment, she gave us an email and I never printed it out, so I don't have it here in front of me. But she basically was supporting it. But go ahead, Jennifer, tell us the.
Sure.
Basics of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members of the planning board, good evening. Thank you for having a public hearing on this warrant article, just to give you a little bit quick history. The Office of the Board of Selectmen has had some newer staff that have learned the process of issuing permits and licenses and those kinds of things. And it was brought to our attention by a local resident about the, you know, abnormal kind of cost that's involved with getting a special permit for six chickens or egg-laying chickens or ducks. So much so that it can sometimes cause the average person looking for this quote-unquote "special permit", sometimes in the order of over $300 because of the fact that they're notifying the butters via certified mail. It's a special permit and it was being advertised in the newspaper, so you had the newspaper cost. And then, of course, a special permit in and of itself is something that gets conditional and goes with the property, so then it gets recorded at the Worcester County Registry of Deeds. Quite onerous in a time period where I think we're, I want to encourage people in the community to take up some types of farming and/or animal raising that helps meet the needs of families. Not to mention that the, the fact that the Town of Oxford is considered to be a right-to-farming community that they adopted a long time ago. So, aside from the fact that we had a citizen, Rachel Perez, who's actually here online with us, and I've had a lot of conversations and so has my office. We brought it before the Board of Selectmen, understanding that this might be a good time to think about actually putting forth a bylaw change. And in this particular case, because it's in our zoning bylaw, it made sense to look at it from that perspective. So, this article actually is looking to actually remove this special permit and actually substitute or replace it with a license requirement. So, aside from the fact that it's a costly endeavor for the average resident to take on, and aside from the fact that the permit itself runs with the land, which, you know, if you think about it, you, you petition the Board of Selectmen, they give you the special permit, it gets registered on the Registry of Deeds. You go and sell your home, well, that permit goes with whoever comes in. And the Animal Control Officer and the Building Commissioner, no one knows necessarily that that person is capable of meeting the same kind of standards that the Board of Selectmen would have vetted the primary owner and applicant. So, it makes better sense to treat this more like a license, like many other kinds of things that the Board of Selectmen has jurisdiction over. The thing that we noticed most is that there was a difference of the way, you know, special permits are being handled in different offices. And so, my job as town manager is looking to see if we can make sure that every, every department handles it the same way. But in, that's an efficiency internally that I think is important. But the Board of Selectmen did agree with a proposition that we put before them because we expected we would have some kind of citizen petition. And really, the Board of Selectmen can, you know, actually change the way that they handle requests for a, a small amount of egg-laying chickens and ducks. So, what we'd like to do is get rid of the fact that this is now currently a special permit process and actually replace it with a license process. The Board of Selectmen could still make sure we get the input of Animal Control and a Building Commissioner. There'd still be a hearing, but not in the traditional sense of a special hearing, a special permit hearing, which you know requires much more advanced notification. But this would be something that wouldn't necessarily need to be put in a newspaper, but it would be posted on the clerk's website. We would also notify the butters, so they would have a chance to, to let their feelings be known to the Board of Selectmen and make sure that they hear that all the vetting had been done. But it wouldn't be certified, there's no need for doing all kinds of things. And whether there's an annual renewal process, we'd be able to put that in as well. So, the Board of Selectmen unanimously believed that they wanted to put forward this change. And my recommendation to the planning board is to allow us to actually remove this from being a special permit process and actually substitute it with a Board of Selectmen policy for licensing six chickens or ducks that are egg-laying or less. And we weren't willing to. Any questions, I, I see Kathleen is here on the phone, our Animal Control Officer. And maybe even Rachel Perez can speak to the fact that we've had a dialogue about that, but I think she understands that this was a joint effort to try to make sure that we could put forth something to be able to, to stand the test of the requirements of town meeting and also sort of come and meet in the middle of the road to make something like this happen.
My biggest question, my biggest question is, we've got two basically articles, one by the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
And one by the citizens of Oxford, put a petition out there and got it on the ballot.
Correct.
Okay. How are we going to handle this?
Sure, I can tell you why, one of the reasons I reached back out to Ms. Perez is to let her know that legal counsel would have ruled on the floor of town meeting that the citizen's petition is not written legally correct to, aren't an actual placement. But we felt it was important to recognize the citizens had actually authorized, you know, a citizen's request. But there is no real attribution to the right sections of the laws and how that would change. So, in essence, it's not giving the town adequate notice because it's not properly written. Rachel understood this and that's why, I mean, the, the goal is the same between the two of us. So, what, what happened is we already knew that she was going to perhaps submit a citizen's petition attempt. And, you know, she's never done this before, she acknowledged that. The Town of Oxford, when we're, when citizen petitions come before us, we're, we do not coach them through the entire process, it would actually be providing legal guidance and we can't do that. But she did a very valiant effort, I already told her, I gave her props for. She's understanding of that, she is willing, if we go forward with this particular warrant article, that I, I, I believe that the next step would be to pass over the citizen petition. So, you know, we're, we're reaching the same goal, it's just one is valid legally and the other one, although it was a valiant effort, is, is, is in concurrence hopefully with the same measures that we're going to put forward. Because the warrant article from the citizen's petition doesn't, like I said, reflect any aspect of the law. And it doesn't say how or what kind of change, it just, it talks about it, you know, in very general terms. And, but actually looking at and speaking in my office, having many communications with Ms. Perez, we could ascertain what it was really that we wanted to change. And I think last conversation I had with her, she agreed that that would be great if we could do this the way that we're talking about doing it. And I think Ms. Flynn, our Animal Control Officer, also agrees that, that we can bring this more in fitting with actually providing it under the licensed jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. So, that's how we would deal with it, we'd probably more likely request to have.
Okay, I will just, I, I will, once we've, you know, we make, vote on this one, we'll vote on the next one and we'll, we'll know which way we should go with our vote. I, I wouldn't say we should recommend both, okay? That's, that's where I was coming from with this whole thing.
I see what you're saying, yep, thank you.
Yep. So, okay, Rachel, you're all set then, huh? You're okay with what the Selectmen put together?
Yes, in fact, I'm even grateful because as I was doing the citizen's petition, I knew that there would probably be something I would overlook or wouldn't do perfectly, and I was just, I was actually excited to have the support of Jennifer and her office and the Board of Selectmen as well, it's, it's almost what I was hoping for. And I'm glad to have gathered all the voice of the citizens. As a side note, but yes, this is splendid, so I'm definitely fine with it.
And if I'm. Number six chickens, I'm just curious. Why is it six?
I think that's in the original.
It's in the, exactly.
Special permit now.
It is.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Excuse me, there is also a law that if you buy baby chicks, like from Tractor Supply or something, you have to buy a minimum of six.
Okay. Kath, Kathleen, my question is, when, I, I'm a little familiar with this, when you buy those six chickens, the gender is not known.
Not always, yes, you're right.
And that, that's a big key thing, because a rooster is a nuisance.
Right. So, that's why we specifically said egg-laying, so if somebody buys six chicks and they discover that one or two or however many of them end up being roosters, then they would have to find another home for the roosters, they would not keep them.
Right, that's a, that's a big concern, because like I said, if you get three roosters and roosters crow every morning.
Right.
And.
Early, early.
At the crack of dawn, and, you know, and if people didn't feel like, well, we're just going to keep them, then that's an issue for the town.
Right. Well, they wouldn't be allowed to keep them with, their license could be revoked.
Okay.
If they kept them, I'm.
And that, that would come under your privilege, the Animal Control or? I'm always looking for the enforcement of this, who's, who's going to enforce this going forward if we?
I would, I would assume I would have to report it to the Board of Selectmen, they're the ones who actually issued the permit.
Okay.
Or the license in this case, so. I, I don't.
It's a renewable license every year, just like the rest of the permits the Selectmen do.
Right.
So, they got to be in good standing. Okay.
So, Jen, one question that I have is. One of the things that was an expense to, you know, folks that want to have chickens is notification of neighbors. Is there? Is there going to be some way that, that neighbors are notified? I mean, we, you know, we have chickens next door to us and I, you know, I'm perfectly fine with them, but everybody in the neighborhood.
You just, you muted Roger.
So, I think, you know, I, I think it's. You know, in everybody's best interests that, you know, they know we have dogs, we know they have chickens. You know, my dog has to eat hyperallergenic, so I want to make sure those chickens are organic and, you know.
So, so to your point. Yes, sorry, Mr. Chairman, through you to Roger. Yes, the, the, the butters would still be notified by regular mail, not certified mail, which is quite costly. So, there, that would be the way that they would be notified and the butters list can be relatively inexpensive. And, and to, and to send it by regular mail, you know, is far less expensive. So, so yes, the answer is, I know that the Board of Selectmen would still like to make sure that neighbors that are but the property within the butters realm would be notified and they'd be notified by regular mail. Of the actual hearing that would take place about a particular application.
I mean, it would be fine to me if we just, you know, knocked on the door next door and said, hey, we're going to have chickens, but.
Can I make a comment about the butters?
Sure.
One thing that made this more of a issue, Roger, is it turned out that the butters list didn't not just consist of properties actually bordering, but, but properties within 300 feet. So, for me, that included people not even in my, like, I can't see them, you know, not in my neighborhood, a road over. So, it, that is part of what made it add up so much.
So, are we reducing the scope for notifying the butters?
Yeah, all we're saying is that, so I, I explained that we are going to replace the special permit with a licensing process that's going to be defined by the Board of Selectmen. They've already looked at one proposal, but they have not, you know, formalized that yet, but it would be replaced by a special, a, a licensing process that's adopted by the Board of Selectmen. I gave you the parameters of what they want to include in that. And so, whether they include the butters to be directly abutting or within 300 feet. They can decide to do.
So, so I have a question. So, hi, I have a question. As far as this amendment, what will the requirement be for housing of these chickens up to the six? Because I see some, I see some, you know, just driving around, some of these chickens are running loose in your yard and so forth. So, I mean, my concern is that, you know, chickens get loose and, you know, go into other people's yards or even, you know, cross the street and get hit or something like that, so.
So, so currently, the Animal Control Officer does take an assessment of the property, examines where they're going to set up their coop, because they're supposed to have a coop that has, provides shelter in an area to feed the chickens and those kinds of things. So, we would want to keep that and maintain that in the license application and process. So, we're not looking to remove that, that exists now. Ms. Flynn has asked for her input for every special permit application that comes forward. And we'd want to continue the same, that she does that with a license. Process.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Hey, you have something?
No, I'm, I guess, I don't want to. So, the, the bottom line is that we're going to get rid of the special permit before the, for the, before the planning board and the Selectmen are taking care of it.
The Selectmen did it the whole time, but they, they're required to do a special permit based upon the zoning bylaw.
So, but they're, they're just basically going to take out our part and they're going to take care of everything.
I think we ever had a part, I don't ever remember doing.
Planning Board never had a part in licensing for animals.
It's always been a Board of Selectmen, they're the special permit granting authority on animals.
Right.
But it did, it has been, the language has been put in the zoning bylaw, so that is why we're before you tonight, because anything, you know. why we're before you tonight, because anything, you know, in the-
Yeah, yeah, that's funny.
Right, so-
I understand that portion of it.
Yeah.
I'm all set with it, I think it's a good idea, and anything we can do to speed up the process and save citizens money, it's just common sense, and I give Rachel credit. Some people would just sit and complain she did something about it, so I support this 100%.
Yeah.
Have you got anything to say? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing? I say yes.
I'll make that.
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Nice, very quick. I was ahead of myself, right? Okay, it's getting late. I've hit that, I've hit that hour, it's getting late.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Okay, thank you for keeping-
Roger.
Okay, I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
I vote yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Christine? Oh, I forgot Dale.
Yes.
I can't see you Dale, you're in the shadows.
I know. Fighting back, yeah.
Okay, Christine? And Roger?
Yes.
Yes.
Carried unanimously. While we're here, why don't we make a motion to recommend article?
Sixteen.
Mary, what article?
Sixteen.
Article sixteen.
I'll make a motion, we recommend article sixteen as written in the town warrant.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Christine. Any discussion? There being none? I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
I vote yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. See a town meeting, Rachel, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
We'll open up the other one. We have another public hearing on the same subject, by citizen's petition. I'll read it into the record. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom meeting application on Monday, September 28th, 2020, at 7:15 to consider an article on the warrant of the special town meeting to be held on October 7th, 2020, submitted by citizen's petition to see if the town will vote to remove the requirement of a special permit for animals for egg-laying poultry, not including roosters. As such, requirement is stated in Article 3, Section 3.8 of the Town of Oxford zoning bylaw, instead, following the model of surrounding towns by treating poultry as a separate category from larger farm animals, requiring registration of poultry, or a yearly state mandated coop inspection, and requiring a caretaken plan to be approved by the animal control officer as already practiced. Anyone desiring to be heard on the matter should join the Zoom meeting at the time designated, which we're all here. So that's why I wanted to make sure that a town meeting, we basically say on this one that it's been taken care of by the previous article, even if the Board of Selectmen postpone indefinitely, or whatever they do. Sometimes they do that, and we have a recommendation. I don't think we need to recommend this article, because I think we took care of it with our recommendation. Does anyone want to speak to this one at all? No? Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make that a motion.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Dale.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion being on all those voting to close? I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Carried unanimously, yeah. Okay. Make a motion that we state that we recommended Article 16 instead of this one, which is, I suppose, is Article 17?
It is.
Okay. So no matter what the selectmen do, we're just saying we're reverting back to 16. Okay. Who made the motion? Who wants to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. I'm a little confused on it, but I'll make the, I understand what you're trying to do. I didn't know if we could just postpone.
We don't know what the selectmen are gonna say, how they're gonna end up. I just, I just say, we're not, we don't-
We're gonna revert back to Article 16.
We recommend Article 16 instead.
Okay, I'll make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Dale, okay. All those voting in favor, I vote yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. Thank you very much for helping us out with those two similar articles.
Thank you, Kathleen.
We've got another one.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, we have, at 7:20, we have a public hearing, proposed zoning bylaw amendment, Chapter 22, Robinson Pond Protection District, add a new section to exclude gas and diesel-powered motorized watercraft on Robinson Pond. Hold on, I'm looking for the paperwork. All right. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom meeting application on Monday, September 28th, 2020, at 7:20 PM to consider an article on the warrant for a special town meeting to be held on October 7th, 2020, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 22, Robinson Pond Protection District of the Town of Oxford zoning bylaw by adding a new subsection 4.4 to exclude gas and diesel-powered motorized watercraft from Robinson Pond. Anyone desiring to be heard should be here, or have something in the record. I have nothing in the records. I think it's self-explanatory that it's the type of pond no one wants powered watercraft on, of diesel and gas, and I assume it was from the Conservation Commission. Jennifer?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, through you to the members. Just to give a quick hint on this, there was a member of the Conservation Board who had brought this issue to my office's attention way back in January, and I think it's been sort of a holdover, worthy goal that the Conservation Commission has for a pond like Robinson Pond, because it has a protection district. Initially, there was a lot of talk in the early phases of it being just Robinson Pond, and over the next several months, leading up prior to our May town meeting, in which at that time I asked everyone just to allow focus predominantly on financial articles, because we were well within the throes of the pandemic, in the surge of the pandemic, and somewhere along the line, there was a larger encompassing effort. The resident at that time was looking to see how could they get an article on the warrant. As you just saw, we saw a citizen petition, even though the article wasn't written correctly, to attempt to get a warrant article on. So we talked about that, they would need 100 signatures and the like. But I said, you know, if the Conservation Commission, and if the Board of Selectmen in the town manager's office deems this to be a worthy effort, you know, we can sponsor an article ourselves. So I had committed, and so did the Board of Selectmen through a vote, that we would actually put forth an article in the fall. Hence, we were still focused on Robinson's Pond, even though some of the effort that got underway expanded not just to Robinson Pond, but they were hoping both Robinson Pond and Carbuncle Pond. Unfortunately, that communication did not transpire up enough during the time period when we were drafting the warrant, and so I have already apologized. Warrant article is focused on Robinson Pond, I have already checked with legal counsel about trying to broaden the motion on town floor to make it applicable to both Robinson Pond and Carbuncle Pond. The problem is that the Carbuncle Pond piece had not been articulated to the council in a tiny fashion, and therefore, it would be considered not worthy of recommending to the townspeople, it would have been ruled out of order. So what I've done is, I've met with our conservation agent, and I said, listen, I understand that, you know, their attempt was to maybe put it just under boating, but since we already have a zoning bylaw with a protection district for Robinson Pond, let us go forward, let us put this provision of electric boating only, basically, on Robinson Pond, put it not only under the protection zoning bylaw, but also we have a bylaw that's just for boating also in this town, which is Chapter 43, and let's also put it under there, but it would only right now be applicable to Robinson Pond. I've made a commitment already to the conservation agent that we have the ability to not just change the zoning district bylaw for the Robinson Pond, but also to put Robinson Pond under the boating general bylaw, and then in the spring, come back and let's add Carbuncle at that time, when we have posted it with the proper notice given to the townspeople. So it's a way of trying to do it in a two-step process, rather than just pass over the article and not do it. We've given people enough ample notice about Robinson Pond, and I think then we can do Robinson Pond and Carbuncle. There is some discussion among certain proponents that they'd like it to apply to all ponds in lakes in town, and I think that might be a little bit more of a, you know, a difficult thing to do, but they would definitely have to give much more advanced notice to the townspeople if that was gonna be the general bylaw. But for now, I think if we can get Robinson Pond taken care of, both a zoning bylaw and a general bylaw, once we've established the general bylaw, we can just add, you know, what ponds we think, in addition to Robinson Pond, that should be restricted to non-diesel, non-fuel boating. So tonight, I'm asking you to actually adopt the warrant article that's presented as written. Just know that my intention is to, on the floor of town meeting, to make a motion not only to create the new section under the zoning bylaw, which would be Section 4, no, excuse me, excuse me, let me go to the right one, would be Section 4.4, which will basically say the restriction. And then we, the motion will also say, there will be language that will say under Chapter 44, under boating, will create a new Section 4 that would restrict only electric boating on Robinson Pond there too. So it's gonna be in two places, the motion's gonna address both, and then, like I said, we'll come back to the apple with another bite in the spring.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else?
Rich, I just want to point out, I live on Sacagawea, and there is a restriction already on Sacagawea. I'm not sure, I think you can go up to a free horsepower gas, but anything after that has to be electric. So these small ponds really need this kind of a restriction, because they're not, it's just not big enough to, you know, support high-powered motors, so.
Yeah.
I would, I would be in favor of this.
Okay.
So does that affect existing residents? You know, if there's folks that already live on the pond that have, you know, small boats or whatever that have gas-powered engines, are they affected as well?
I think if you pass this, yes, they would be restricted. One of the things I supplied to the board was some information today, including a letter that was written by, you know, citizens, that was sent to the Oxford Board of Selectmen. And one of the things that they had noted were the number of people who already had electric boats on a particular pond, and that, you know, once this would be passed, it is my understanding that there wouldn't be any special provision, would be a hard one. If you, if you say that anybody who's on the pond on a boat has to have electric motors, then that would apply to them as well. They may have to convert their motors or their boat to an electric one.
Saying the motion to close the public hearing?
Make that a motion. A motion.
Second.
Sorry, can we repeat that?
Motion was made by Norman, seconded by Jeff. I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Right? Muted. Okay. Dale?
Yes. I vote yes.
Okay, and Christine? And Roger?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Carried unanimously. Okay, entertain a motion to make a recommendation, affirmative recommendation at town meeting for this article?
Article 11.
11.
Rich, I make a recommendation that we support this article as written.
As written, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I think, I think Craig did too.
Okay, Craig did it good.
What?
Craig.
You didn't say anything, I thought you said something. You've been soft today, by the way.
No.
Okay, seconded by Jeff.
Okay.
Okay. I vote yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Norman?
I vote yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. Okay, one more public hearing. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom meeting application on Monday, September 28th, 2020, at 7:25 PM to consider an article on the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on October 7th, 2020, to see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning bylaw, Chapter 14, Administration and Enforcement, Section 2, violations and penalties by striking Section 2.3 in its entirety and inserting in its place the following. 3.2.3 penalties, if after written notice of a violation of this bylaw continues, the building inspector shall institute appropriate legal proceedings to enforce the provisions of this bylaw, or to restrain any violation thereof or both. Whoever violates any provision of this bylaw or lawful order of the building inspector or fails to take constructive action to rectify any such violation shall be subject to a fine of not more than $300 per offense. Each day that a violation continues shall constitute a separate offense. Anyone desiring to be heard should be at the meeting, and I have a few people out there anyway. I have nothing written. So we're putting teeth in our building inspector.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if I may try to adjust this, this is, basically, the entire section is the same, except again, it tries to remove two words, which were inserted in that whole entire 2.3 penalty section, called non-criminal civil disposition. That is the way that, whether it's the Board of Health Agent, or the building inspector, or any other person, they are only allowed to enforce our bylaws and our zoning bylaws through non-criminal civil disposition under this particular section of our bylaw. The problem here is someone years ago wrote upon conviction and inserted it into this, and upon conviction is actually a criminal terminology. I don't think it's right to take a non-criminal civil disposition section of our bylaw and insert upon conviction, which implies that someone has done something criminally wrong, and it has no place in there. And all it does is it confuses what's happening to a normal resident who might need coaching, you know, on the first pass if they've done something that hasn't, you know, been approved by one of our inspectors, you know, then it gets followed up by, you know, a verbal warning can be followed up by a written- up by a written warning. And then, you know, the noncriminal civil penalties uh for whatever amount get assessed. Um what happens is people use that word upon conviction, and unfortunately, it implies that our residents are acting in a criminal manner. It needs to be removed from this section. It has no place in it. There's not another town that has that. I don't know who inserted it. It was probably done years ago, but um it has no bearing in a noncriminal civil disposition. And had we had our attorneys years ago, probably when this was drafted, they would have never allowed that inside. It has no bearing in this section. And all it does is, I think, confuse residents and also sometimes makes our building uh commissioner concerned with uh doing their normal job uh to go out and enforce noncriminal civil disposition when people um are not conforming with the bylaw. That's all. Two words.
Yeah. Very good.
Yeah. Jen, I don't disagree with you, but there are cases where people are doing things illegally that can result in a criminal.
Yes.
Action.
True, but it doesn't belong in this section.
No, no.
But that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that you can't take somebody to court for repeated, you know, doing things. But there's other sections of Mass State Building Code and also jurisdiction legally for protection of uh public safety and the like that can get to that point, but that's not in this section. This section is making references to noncriminal civil disposition fines and penalties. And they've got that inserted and that basically, you know, some people interpret, well, if I'm not, I'm not, I have not been um convicted of a crime, therefore you can't assess a a a normal penalty for something that I might have done. It it makes no sense at all. So that's why it's, it really shouldn't be in there. But you're right, we we still can do that, but you know, that's a different, different route and a different section of law.
Okay.
But thank you, Jeff. Good question.
Anyone else? Okay, entertain a motion. Is anyone from the public interest in this one? I see there's a couple people down there. I don't know who they are. They they they're just uh, they're not video people, they're audio only. Anyway, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that a motion.
Seconded by Dale, okay. Further discussion, there being none. All those voting in favor, I vote yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine? Okay, she's muted. That's okay. I got you, Christine. Uh Roger?
Yes.
Yes.
I got you. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Entertain a motion to recommend this article at the special town meeting as written. Article fifteen, okay, as written.
I'll make that a motion.
A second.
A second.
Seconded by Christine. Further discussion, being none, I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Jen, for all your help tonight.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it. And just on a side note, um tomorrow night I will be announcing publicly the um incoming development, which I already know where, but I just wanted to let you know that at my board meeting.
What's going on? Someone's building something over there. All right.
Sounds like a dog is running around or something, maybe. Anyway.
Thank you, Jennifer.
They'll be coming to you, obviously. All right. Thank you so much for all of your help during that process. I'm very.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
Mary, any other articles that the planning board has to make a recommendation on?
There is. There is article um, oh, I had it written down. When we got, Article twelve regarding a land. I think the planning board needs to make a recommendation on.
Sorry about that.
Mary, I didn't hear what you said. The what?
Twelve, I'll read the article to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey a parcel of town-owned land together with a group thereon situated on Southbridge Road, Route twenty. Known as Parcel A, containing eight-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet, more or less, on a plan, a plan of estate in Oxford, Mass, William F. and Winifred J. Duffy, dated August eighth, nineteen fifty-one, reported with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds and Plan Book one-eighty-five, Plan eighty. In being a portion of that property acquired by the town in a decree recorded with said registry of deeds in Book five-three-seven-four, page two-eighty-one, conveyance to be for such consideration, which may be no consideration, and upon such terms and conditions, as the Board of Selectmen shall deem advisable or act thereon, granted by the town and its parent Board of Selectmen.
Jeff, uh Jen, these are small parcels?
Yeah, no, it's actually just one parcel. Mr. Chairman, thank you. And thank you, Mary, uh for reminding us uh to come back to that. That's Article twelve on the warrant. This is um already been a parcel that had been negotiated for a purchase and sale with the current owner um to a prospective marijuana retail um establishment or corporation. And what happened is as they were doing the title search, um this particular property that used to be the um uh, what do you call it? Strip club on Route twenty there.
Oh, okay.
Prior to that becoming um that business, it was years ago put into tax title. The whole property, but it used to be more than one property. It was this little parcel in the middle, surrounded by the other. And it clearly by legal um research by the town, uh because we want to make sure, but more importantly, by their own um type tax title attorneys, it shows that um all of it, when it was bequeathed as a tax title property, was supposed to be recorded in the Worcester County Registry of Dees when it was then bought out by the next um owner. And for some reason, um it, that eight-hundred-and-fifty-five square foot piece wasn't. And so legally, they can't buy the the property because that little piece is in the middle. Um and so the town actually still owns it. And so this is to basically say that, you know, um the town is actually going to to uh release um its uh hold or the ownership of that property. So so that it can actually go forward and and be developed the way it was supposed to. So nobody knew this until the owners went uh to sell the property to the uh prospective new owners. And uh then they found out, lo and behold, there was one little piece in the the whole parcel that had not been conveyed um properly. So it was a mistake that the town made years ago. And, you know, so, you know, it'll be a small sum of money that would, you know, obviously, we did, we don't, we didn't think we owned it and we have no interest in that. We have more of an interest in the whole parcel being redeveloped to bring money into the town. So anyway, so I'd I'd ask that the board uh recommend the article um to be um actually uh passed at town meeting.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
It wasn't a public hearing.
Well, good.
Recommendation.
Oh, a recommend- I'm sorry. Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend the article, Article twelve, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Seconded by Christine. Any further discussion? There being none. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
I'll abstain, Rich. I'll abstain.
Okay. Dale?
Yes.
Christine? Yes, okay. Roger?
Yes.
Craig?
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, carried unanimously.
Well, not really. I abstained, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Norman abstained.
I got that.
Okay, as it's getting later and later, we haven't had a late meeting in a long time. Uh, Mary, what do we, well, you got on your agenda forty-two Milbury Road, request for a temporary occupancy.
And Lyle McKay is here on behalf of that uh subject matter. He um had a, I believe I sent you some correspondence.
Yes.
Yeah.
So his contractor unfortunately passed away this past winter and um had already started some stormwater management components according to an approved plan. Um and when Mr. McKay tried to get his engineer out to certify the components and do an as-built, the uh engineer said, I can't certify this because the contractor didn't build it according to the approved plan. So um Lyle sent you a letter. Um.
Yeah, yeah, I do remember reading that.
Really kind of stuck in between a rock and a hard place right now. It's paying interest only apparently on a construction loan, and he would like to be able to um get at least a temporary occupancy until the stormwater issues can be addressed and fixed. So I will let Mr. McKay speak to the issue.
He also hung with the heating and uh the HVAC guy putting the heating in.
Correct.
Definitely had uh some.
Real problems, yeah.
Yeah.
So good evening. Um, my name is Lyle McKay, I'm property owner at forty-two Milbury Road. And uh, as you said, my contractor died. Um, we lost a lot of advance money uh when he passed away. That was unrecoverable. Like you said, the HVAC system was done completely wrong. Uh, cost us an additional forty thousand dollars. And right now, we're currently paying almost two grand a month to interest only. And it's just really an insurmountable um insurmountable mountain to climb for us right now. It's just, it's, I can't get um homeowners' insurance without occupancy. Where do we fall if something actually happens? Now the lawsuit's completed, technically. Um, you know, if something were to happen now, we're not protecting our investment. And um I understand the the town's interest in the the water management plan, and I completely understand that. I'm not trying to cut any corners. But at some point, there has to be some human element that's brought forward um from this. I just, I can't uh continue um carrying on like this. And there's no way that we're going to be able to, in a short-term fix, be able to spend the extra fifteen thousand on top of a hundred grand that we lost last two years over this project, on top of continuing to pay interest only at two thousand dollars a month. It's just really, it's extended circumstances for us. And we're just really hoping that the board can understand that we've gone through every possible way we could through insurances, through, I'm working with the insurance company now that the contractor had, but he's dead. So it's like, it's really difficult to move forward um with these types of cases and even a lawsuit-type thing, which is again, thousands of dollars to even entertain the idea of lawsuits on top of COVID, ports being closed. We're looking at a year to two years before we're even thinking about maybe retaining back some of that money, recouping some of that money that we've lost. So we're just at the point right now where we've literally refinanced our home just to be able to fix the HVAC system so we could comply with that. And we're at the top of our line. I mean, we have a decent amount of equity in the home that we lost over the top of everything. So we're just really kind of stuck, like you said, in between a rock and a hard spot, you know, where we don't have the the money to go out and rent a place. We have to stay at my parents' house, like, on a mat, and she's in um promote learning. I'm in college, so it's like, I'm trying to do my schoolwork, she's trying to do her schoolwork. But we just don't have the, you know, accommodations that are deserved for what we've been through and what we we've uh paid for.
Yeah. Who can we, who can we have go out and assess the what from a stormwater management point of view?
On our staff?
Yeah.
Somebody who works for the town of Oxford.
Peter or something to go out and take the plan and go out there and see what's wrong with, how detrimental it is to the uh environment.
Peter to go take a look at it.
That's that, that's my only issue. I I don't know exactly what's wrong with your stormwater management.
Well, if I may interject, is, they put um piping beneath the ground that uh has holes in it. I don't know the term for it, but it goes underground to um sunlight with rocks to a trench that goes out to the basin. From my understanding, there was supposed to be some type of retention area swale that wasn't put in. Um, I've had all this reviewed by a uh company that does this stuff. And I guess it was pretty close to fifteen thousand dollars to complete it. I don't have that kind of money. Um, and I'm just out of resources at this point after everything they've been through. So I mean, at the end of the day, this house has been here for a year and a half and the road hasn't washed out. And I know it's a process and a long-term thing that happens, but we haven't had any issues. It are just very wet and it's it's controlled itself with what's in place. So I don't know if there's a way to make a compromise and say it's doing its job. Um, it's just not pretty looking as the plan.
Rich, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the house is done, you're ready to move in, except we haven't signed off on the stormwater management. Is that the only thing stopping you from moving in?
Uh, other than uh the assessor needs to come out, and I believe the building inspector needs to sign off on permit. Everything else has been signed off on.
And the house has been up there for a year?
At least a year.
Okay. And has been no issues with runoff or anything?
No issues whatsoever.
Let me ask you this question. If we were to give you a temporary occupancy permit, how long would it take for you to come in compliance? Do you need six months, a year? What do you think you would need?
I mean, I think that's just a loaded question at this point as far as the timeframe goes for me to give you that answer, because we're talking fifteen thousand dollars of of a project, and I'm still recouping on the back end of everything I've dealt with. I mean, we've taken high-interest loans out to make up for the hundred thousand dollars we lost just so we finish the house um as far as that goes. So it would be very difficult for me to be in touch with you and feel that I would be.
The only way I could see us helping you out, we'd have to talk about it, is giving you a temporary occupancy permit for a certain amount of time, you know, and then revisit it, whatever. If we give you six months or a year, then you have to come back and, you know, see if you've got the money to finish the job or not. I mean, I, it sounds like you're really up against it. We really should try to help you out as much as we can. And it's been up there a year and a half.
Yeah, really.
I have no problem. But anyway, um, give him a temporary occupancy permit and revisit it.
Can do that. I I have no problem doing that, but I want to not, you know, I don't know if he's next to what ones. I don't know. Uh, bottom line is, if you don't want to do anything else and you think it's the way it, way it could be and could function, you'd have to have an engineer submit a new uh stormwater management proposal to the, to us to have it reviewed. I mean, you got something on record that 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 uh was approved.
I mean, Lyle, do you have neighbors? Is your house built close to other houses? Is it, where does this swale go? To the way to the road?
It goes to the road. So uh from, the land that I'm on is my family's land. It's uh on eleven and a half acres. We have three and a half acres of it. The concern that came into play is because we have the hill that goes up towards Federal Hill that slopes back down to Milbury Road. Um, so there's, in the old days, before all this water management stuff, there was these old stone drains uh drains that were man-made back in the day, and they handled the water. And then when the house came in, we were told we had to do the water management plan, and then they came up with their design. And I mean, even speaking with other people that were doing this type of stuff and that came out and looked at the project, they were telling me how much overkill it was for what we're trying to do uh as far as a single-family residence goes. So I I mean, we, I figure, remember back a couple years ago when we came and sat and talked to you guys, and we went back and forth with uh Hanigan at the time, and then with our engineer. And again, something that we thought was going to be a short thing ended up being a ten thousand dollar project just to get a a water management plan done after all the amount of money we had to pay between the two engineers. So I mean, it's just, it it's a really difficult situation that we're in, and I think it's extenuating circumstances. Um, by all means, I mean, we all hear nightmares of people building houses, but I mean, this, I think, takes the cake.
I guess my point is, is if this system fails, it's gonna, it's gonna fail onto the Milbury Road. It's not gonna fail onto somebody else's property or.
Right. I mean, this property is right up against Milbury Road. I mean, we meet our cutbacks, obviously, but there's no, our neighbors are, I don't know, quite quite far away.
Okay.
Well, that's another reason to get the DPW engineer to look at it.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's all. And and maybe he can give you some advice. But Norman, I I agree with a temporary occupancy, but I I've, I've never done, I've, we've never done it beyond six months.
What's six months, one, and then come back and revisit us?
In the meantime, have the DPW engineer take a look at it and see. In the meantime, have the DPW engineer take a look at it and see how bad it is. I mean, I know you've got an estimate of fifteen thousand dollars, but, you know, that's just one engineer. I mean.
You know, I think part of the things you get on these boards, we want to try to help people out, and at the same time, you know, enforce our bylaws. This is an extenuating circumstance. Got a young people here that are trying to get a home, they're up against it. I would be in favor of giving a six-month temporary occupancy permit. During that time, Mary, let's try to get someone from the town to go out and take a look at this. Okay? And come back in six months. Maybe they'll look at it, they'll make some adjustments, so maybe it's not going to cost you as much. I mean, the fact that it's been there for a year and a half, and it seems to be working, you know, it's got to hold some kind of merit. So I would make a motion, if that's what we have to do, Rich, if it's okay with you, that we issue these people a six-month temporary occupancy permit to allow them to get into their home. And within six months, you people come back to us, give us an update as to what's going on.
Okay.
In the meantime, Mary, if we, Rich, again, Rich through you, if we could get someone from the town to go out and take a look at this and evaluate it, I think that would be helpful. So that's my motion, Rich.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Agree with it.
Okay.
I heard Dale.
I'll second it. I'll give it to Roger this time. Okay. For any further discussion, hey, that's all we can do. We can't give you a bye and say you can never do it. We've got, you've got the stormwater management system that was approved by us. If it's impacting just the town, maybe you can look at it and suggest something that's less expensive to finish it off. You've already got a lot of it done. You're just saying it doesn't have a pension base. Since people, it's so dry that nothing may show up right now, but anyway. Let's let a guy from DPW protect his own road. He'll tell you what he thinks.
Thank you.
I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman? Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Craig?
Yes.
Carrie, you need to asleep.
Good luck.
Good luck to you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Hey. Fifty-two Merriam District, revisions to stormwater management. I got the plans, Mary, but where are we supposed to go with this thing?
This was approved back in two thousand and six, I believe, by the planning board, stormwater management for the development of a lot per single-family home system, et cetera. But the lot was never developed. Now, the lot is proposed to be developed again. And the developer was submitting documentation to the Board of Selectmen, and then the administrative assistant, not Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, sorry. The administrative assistant for the Board of Health questioned why she didn't have a site plan. So I said, "Oh, I think that was like a stormwater plan. It's a stormwater component on it." So I reached out to the developer and let him know that it really should kind of pass through the planning board. So I had Pete, here are DPW project managers, take a look at the plan for comparison from what was approved back in two thousand and six to what is being shown on the plan now. And I am a stormwater expert, but I took a quick look at it, too. And I actually saw a lot of improvement from the two thousand and six plan to the two thousand and twenty plan. But anyway, I had Peter Hard take a look at it, and he noticed a minor thing. And we have a memo on that that Peter gave us this afternoon. Do you have it? You want me to read it?
No, I don't. You read it into the record, because all your emails I got this afternoon, I didn't print out, so.
Okay. So this is a memo from Peter Gearhard to the planning board dated September twenty-eighth regarding fifty-two Merriam District Stormwater Management Review. The following materials form the basis of my review for the stormwater management. Proposed site plan for fifty-two Merriam District dated October twenty-second, two thousand and six, with revision date of September sixth, two thousand and six. And then proposed site plan for fifty-two Merriam District dated September eleventh, twenty. DPW requests that the rim elevation of the proposed dump catch basins, located between the road edge and the southern property line, be dropped six inches below the road edge elevation, as opposed to the note that directs the rim elevation to match existing grade. This convention is known by DPW, who wants to be documented.
Remember now, so he has issues with what's on paper.
But the DPW would like to confirm.
Yes.
Anyway, I reached out to the developer. I photocopied him on this memo, and, or copied him on the memo, and asked him to get back to it, to respond to it.
So it sounds like it's minor, just elevation problems. And it doesn't sound like he's, it's a major modification. It's...
No.
Just that he just doesn't like a couple of things, so.
Right.
Let him work with the DPW, and I don't think we have to have him submit for a modification at this point.
Okay.
All right? Okay.
Alrighty. So there was one.
Sandpiper Lane. Sandpiper Lane.
Oh, Sandpiper Lane, yeah. Got to write that one down.
I think, I think they're trying to use fifteen grand to assure that it got finished paved, to do the finished paving. What's going to assure that it gets done? Release the money, we got nothing. That's the way I'm, that's the way I'm looking at it, Mary. We had this passbook put in to allow them to build on the common driveway.
So I had a discussion with one of the residents on Sandpiper Lane quite some time ago, and I think they were probably getting tired of the developer finishing the road, so that I think they wanted to take matters into their own hands and say that they would keep the road.
Well, they can, if they take out a fifteen grand loan, do it. And then we release the fifteen grand after it gets approved. That was done right. You've got to understand what the fifteen thousand was there was for security to make sure it got done. I mean, that's my approach. I'll let you board members talk, discuss it too, if you want. But the reason there was that passbook developed was because they took out building permits on a common driveway that wasn't done.
I agree with the chairman.
I agree also.
Okay. I know they got this legalese saying, yeah, take the fifteen grand, but leaves the town without any leverage at all. You don't need any motions to do anything, Mary. Just tell them the board feels you. You can't have that fifteen thousand without completing the work first.
Okay.
And we'll gladly give it to you, because we don't need it anymore.
Okay. And where holding that?
The bank must be far us.
Okay.
It should be town of Oxford control.
Okay.
I didn't know, I don't know where all the money is on anything we got. But I do know we put out, we needed some assurance that the common driveway was done.
Okay. Okay. I'll reach out to the county.
Get their attorney, yeah. Take out a thirty-day loan, sixty-day loan, whatever they got to do to have it paved.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I ran that one by you.
Know why we kept the fifteen grand? It wasn't for us to pave it unless we really had to. Anyone have anything else? There was a memo, there was a memo about six oh eight. There was some major work done to fill in the retention basin at the bottom of the hill.
Nice flat lawn, yeah.
Fence on, truck on, just a slight indent.
And again, going back to that, you know, something happens there, and somebody comes up, and there's a huge puddle on Route twelve that's never been there before, and somebody gets hurt. Again, that's just malicious intent.
The middle of winter, whatever. It could be Wednesday night, they're saying, we're going to get a couple inches of rain.
And that was a key part of that stormwater management, was having that retention basin there and working properly.
Right. So, anyway, a letter has been sent to the owner of the property by Peter Gearhard, a DPW project manager, and I'll provide an update as soon as I know more.
Good. Did we miss anything?
I don't think so. I think, wait, just look at my yellow pad here.
That's fine, go ahead. As far as the members go, we're going to meet next Monday for a very short time, just so we can approve that subdivision plan.
We're going to hold you to that, Rich.
Hey, it's what you put in front of me. Okay. It's what you put in front of me. Got that. That's all we got so far. That's all we got so far. In any way, the town meeting is next Wednesday night. It's at the high school again.
Yeah, we'll be socially distanced and masked.
Is it going to be in the gymnasium again, just like it was last time?
I would have to think it's going to be.
Let's hope for cooler weather. Let's hope cooler weather next week.
Yeah, yeah. It was hot in June.
Okay. Anyone else? Christine?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Very good, I can hear you.
Thanks, Norman.
Second, Norman?
I second it, Rich.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Alright.
All those voting in favor, vote yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Norman? Dale, yes. Christine, yes. Roger, yes.
Yes.
Craig, yes.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, everybody.